All right, item number one. First, may I have a motion to...
Open public hearings, one through twenty.
All right, we have a motion of the public hearing from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. We'll go to item number one.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I need to make a motion by request that is made by the Planning Commission, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Motion, motion setting Plan Amendment Adoption Hearing for T A C P twenty dash one, T A C P A twenty dash zero three, T A C P A twenty dash zero five, T A C P A twenty dash zero six, T A C P twenty dash zero seven, T A C P A twenty dash zero eight, T A C P A twenty dash zero nine, and T A C P A twenty dash ten, and a Plan Amendment Transmittal Hearing for T A C P A twenty oh two, and T A C P A twenty dash zero four, on the evening of July thirtieth, twenty twenty, at five oh one P M.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Citro with a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Item number one. Is the microphone on over there? Go ahead.
I'm speaking, but I don't...
No, 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 over at the, by the table there, the tabletop one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm new at this. Michelle Ogilvy, Planning Commission Staff, and I am here to present the adoption of Plan Amendment nineteen thirteen. And if I may, just put this on the Elmo.
All right, if we can redirect the camera to the overhead projector that we have on the table.
As you can see on the Elmo, we have a request for a new objective and policy in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan that would allow for the support and encouragement of health-in-all policies. During the update of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, we would investigate the common sets of terms inclusive of aging, disability, safety, access to jobs, schools, healthcare, healthy food, and recreation, and also to support complete streets, complete neighborhoods, health food systems, and environmental health based on evidence. As you recall, and it's been a very long time, earlier this year, we came to you with the evidence that we have been collecting over the last three years through a health atlas. Maybe I should show it. Showing evidence that in our areas of low income in particular, we have what's known as food deserts, and that health and food access are combined, that we have poor outcomes from transportation data, and from health, including chronic diseases, that they're all combined. So, we have been looking at this and are coming forward with this recommendation so that we can change the future of many of the residents in our community. The Department of Economic Affairs did review and had no comments on the Plan Amendment. We are consistent, once more, with land, the future land use element, ensuring social and economic health, mobility elements, several policies which speak to promoting safe mobility, encouraging improved air quality, stimulating the economy. Other policies in the Comprehensive Plan that this would be supportive and consistent with would include enhancing neighborhood identity, sustaining Tampa as a healthy, vital city, encouraging children and families to have places where they can have some fun, including community gardens. And so, our recommendation continues to be consistency with the Comprehensive Plan, and we hope that you will approve this request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close?
Just want to move.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Vera, if you wouldn't mind taking item number one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you, sir. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Amendment, establishing land use objective two point three, and policy two point three point one, to include a health-in-all policies approach to planning whereby decision-makers consider how plans and policies will impact human health, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
All right, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Carlson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Item number two, Mr. Hay.
Good evening, David Hay, Planning Commission Staff.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, we need to announce the vote.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hay.
Good afternoon, David Hay, Planning Commission Staff. The next item for your review, this is an adoption hearing, it is Future Land Use Amendment nineteen sixteen, if we could have the power, Elmo. The Transitional Use Twenty Four Future Land Use Category was created to recognize those unique areas of the city that allow, that already had an existing pattern of industrial, residential, and commercial uses, all mixed in. The previously adopted definitions had recognized these areas as industrial in character and discouraged Plan Amendments to that Transitional Use Twenty Four. In twenty eighteen, the Planning Commission Staff did conduct a land use analysis of that Transitional Use Twenty Four. It identified seven unique areas of the city where the land use is present. The study identified that the majority of parcels are non-residential in character, either light industrial or heavy industrial, heavy commercial uses, excuse me, a lot of car lots and car repairs. The proposal is to prohibit future Plan Amendments to that T U Twenty Four. We had a number of people come to the Planning Commission requesting that category, and staff felt that it was appropriate that there be language in the plan in line with the staff, the historic staff interpretation of how that land use category is to be implemented. It does also provide additional policy guidance when you're rezoning property in proximity to residential uses. The policies would also direct Planning Commission Staff to work with existing property owners to recommend only other land use categories that would better fit their, their property. It is, it is not mandatory, it is only when the applicant seeks our advice. The city's long-term goal, though, is to reduce or eliminate the prevalence of that T U Twenty Four Future Land Use Category. Based on that, the Planning Commission did find it consistent, there are policy directions dealing with the discouragement of residential and industrial uses being located next to each other. And then, there was also policies dealing with, next, a promotion of compatible uses. We've had issues in the past where industrial, light industrial and residential are located very close to each, each other in this category, and it would also be consistent with the land development regulations for the city. So, based on that, the Planning Commission Staff is recommending that it be found consistent, and there were no issues from the state.
Thank you very much. Are there any councilmembers with any questions? Councilmember Dingfelder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things, David. One, you have, you mentioned seven G R A F areas, were these predominant? Do you have a map of that?
I don't have a map. They're predominantly in east Tampa, right around Thirty-Ninth, there's a segment, there's some up, it's mostly in east Tampa. There is a small segment down in south Tampa, near the railroad tracks, but the predominant is east.
I know we've run into a few of them in the rezoning context over the last six to nine months.
Yeah, in south Tampa.
If, as planners, if you guys have recognized that perhaps it's not the greatest category in the world, even though it's been around for a long time, why didn't we just recommend Plan Amendments to change the category to something different or more appropriate?
Well, I think for Planning Commission Staff, you know, these property owners already have particular rights with the land use category that they have, and I think staff felt uncomfortable recommending the removal of some of those rights, because all the other land use categories would, would take away something that they already have. Like, for instance, if you're dealing with a site that is built at residential, but that person, long-term, may want a light industrial use, if the city went in there and removed the land use to remove the industrial, that could be considered, I would think, a taking for the potential there. It just, it usually causes issues.
Okay, last question, Ms. Wells, maybe you can help me in that regard, because I recall, I recall periodically when we do comp plan updates, that sometimes we go in and wholesale change categories and that sort of thing, and in the past, I didn't think we worried about takings in the land use category, I mean, when we're talking about comp plan and land use, as compared to, I understand, when somebody actually has a zoning category, it might be a little stronger, but correct me if I'm wrong.
I think with this amendment, it would actually make it easier to do those types of wholesale comp plan amendments, since we're limiting that use and encouraging people not to, to stay with that land use designation. I think that would actually support that effort, rather than T U Twenty Four still being on the books and allowed to support so many different uses, and giving property owners that flexibility to decide what they want, is that future land use designation. So, I actually think this, this amendment would support that effort in initiating a comprehensive amendment to those properties that still have that designation.
So, it's sort of a shot across the bow that something else might be coming down the road?
Definitely places property owners on notice that this use is not, this future land use designation is not supported.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, anybody from the public wish to speak on this item?
Move close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilmember Goode, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Councilmember Goode, if you wouldn't mind taking item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Orders being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance amending the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, land use objective eight point one three, and policy eight point one three point one to eight point one three point three, offer additional policy direction for areas currently designated Transitional Use Twenty Four, T U Twenty Four, prohibiting the change of the Transitional Use Twenty Four category. Renumber existing use, land use policy eight point one three and eight point four two. Renumber existing land use policies eight point fourteen and eight point fifty, providing repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing severability, providing effective date.
Second.
You got a motion and a second, Mr. Chair.
Who was the second?
Down here.
All right. A second from Councilmember Vera, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we move on to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead and read it.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
All right, thank you very much. So, item number three, and then items five through eleven, we can hear them all together in a bulk package, but we have to read them by title individually. It'll save us time. Basically, what it is, is, and of course, there's going to be further explanation, existing parks throughout the city, changing them to recreation, open space, future land use categories, basically, we've done this before, where it protects existing parks from further development. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, David Hay, again, with your Planning Commission Staff. The next eight items are adoption, public hearings for those parks. These are parks scattered throughout the city. There's also nineteen oh seven E is Sulfur Springs, which is not on that map. Excellent. A little background, this was initiated by City Council. Each park is listed in the City of Tampa's Dedicated Park List, and all sites would be recognized to that recreation, open space. And your Planning Commission did find this consistent with your existing policies regarding recreation, open space. So, first, we'll do nineteen oh seven E, that's Sulfur Springs Park, and we'll just, again, this park was in front of you before as a partial, but it came back as a whole due to some legal issue, so the entire park would go to that recreation, open space, which you could see. Next. And then, it would remove the potential for twenty-five dwelling units, or that square footage. Next is item, let's keep this straight, item five is Waterworks Park. It's in the central Tampa in Tampa Heights, we all know it's right where U L A L E's is. Right now, it has a regional mixed-use one hundred, future land use category, and it would go to that recreation, open space. Again, it removes the potential for three hundred and seventy-one units, or five hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet of non-residential, and that's number five. On to number six, this is nineteen fourteen B, DeSoto Park. This is in the Palmetto Beach neighborhood, we could see the aerial there. Half the park is already rec open space, the eastern half is that residential thirty-five, and the whole park would go to the rec open space. Again, it removes the potential for two hundred and twenty-four units, or a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet. Next, on to item seven, Cypress Point Park, it's over in the West Shore Planning District. You could see the aerial, this is just south of the airport. The majority of the site is already rec open space, it's hard to see, but there are a few airport compatibility portions of the park, and it would bring it all to the rec open space. And since it's in that airport compatibility, there is no residential, but it would remove the potential for up to two hundred thousand square feet of non-residential. All right, on to item eight, it's nineteen fourteen D, Bobby Hicks Park, it's in the South Tampa Planning District, more specifically, the Gandy Sun Bay South neighborhood. You could see it's surrounded by single-family detached, a majority of the park is wet. The southern portion of the park is already rec open space, that northern portion on West Bay Avenue is residential ten, this Plan Amendment would remove that. So, the whole park would be rec open space. Removes the potential for seventy-eight units, or a hundred and nineteen thousand square feet of non-residential. On to Site E, item nine, nineteen fourteen E, Gadston Park, again, in the South Tampa Planning District, it's in the Inner Bay neighborhood. This is just north of MacDill Air Force Base, there's a large wet area on the western side of the park. That is the portion that has that residential six, future land use category, and under this proposal, that would also go to the rec open space. Due to its size, it removes the potential for two hundred and nine units, or, I don't know if that square footage is correct, but it removes some square footage. And next, Reed Park, which is, I think, ten, item ten. It's in the central Tampa Planning District in the Seminole Heights Urban Village. Here, you could see it's right along the Hillsborough River. It's R thirty-five, R twenty, excuse me, R twenty currently, and this would turn the park into that rec open space. Yep. Another park on the river. It would move the potential for a hundred and five units, or a hundred and fourteen thousand square feet. And then, we're on to Site G, which is item eleven, Rivercrest Park, it's in the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically, the Seminole Heights Urban Village. Again, right along the river, so we're saving another park along the Hillsborough River. Right now, a portion is that rec open space, while the southern portion is that residential ten, and this would remove that res ten, so the whole park would be recognized. Forty-five units would be, the potential of forty-five units would be removed, or the sixty-eight thousand square feet of non-residential, and that's it.
All right, thank you very much. And that covers those items. Are there any questions from any councilmembers regarding any of these? Nope. Anybody from the public wish to speak on items three, and then, five through eleven? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close?
Move close.
Motion closed from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Citro. We do have to read these individually. I think next up is Councilmember Dingfelder, if you wouldn't mind reading item number three.
I'd be glad to, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the following ordinance being presented for first reading, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at seven thirteen East Bird Street, and otherwise known as Sulfur Springs Park, from Community Commercial thirty-five, C C thirty-five, to Recreation Open Space, R O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dingfelder, a second from Councilmember Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Councilmember Carlson, oh.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much. Item number four, I'm sorry, item number five, Councilmember Carlson, if you wouldn't mind taking that one.
Yes, I'd like to move file number P A nineteen dash fourteen A, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map, and the property generally located at eighteen twelve North Highland Avenue, and otherwise known as Waterworks Park, from regional mixed-use one hundred, R N U one hundred, to recreational open space, R O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson, second from Councilmember Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Citro, if you wouldn't mind taking item number six.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, file number P A nineteen dash fourteen V, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance amending the Image 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at twenty-six fifteen East Korean Street, and otherwise known as DeSoto Park, from recreational open space, R O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances in, excuse me, open space, R O S, residential thirty-five, R thirty-five, water and light industrial, L I, to recreational open space, R O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro with a second from Councilmember Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Miranda, if you wouldn't mind taking item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, file number P A nineteen dash fourteen C, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an order amending the Image 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at fifty-five twenty West Cypress Street, and otherwise known as Cypress Point Park, from Municipal Airport M dash A P, and Recreation Open Space, R dash O S, Recreation Open Space, R O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Vera, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Vera, would you mind taking number eight?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at forty-one twenty West Mango Avenue, and otherwise known as Bobby Hicks Park, from residential ten, R ten, and recreational open space, R dash O S, to recreational open space, R dash O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Goode, would you mind taking number nine?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at sixty-nine oh one South MacDill Avenue, otherwise known as Gadston Park, from residential dash ten, R ten, residential six, R six, and residential slash open space, R slash oh six, to recreation open space, R S, R slash O S, providing a repeal for all orders and conflict, providing severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Goode, second from Councilmember Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much. Next, we move to item number ten, Councilmember Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to move the following ordinance for first reading, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at forty-three hundred Riverside Drive, and otherwise known as Reed Park, from residential twenty, R twenty, to residential open space, R O S, providing for repeal of ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dingfelder, a second from Councilmember Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Nope, go ahead.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Carlson, would you mind taking number eleven?
Yes, I'd like to move file number P A nineteen fourteen G, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at four eight oh two North River Boulevard, and otherwise known as Rivercrest Park, from residential ten, R ten, and recreational space, recreational open space, R O S, to recreational open space, R O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Carlson, a second from Councilmember Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M.
Okay, and just to move things along, items fourteen through twenty, I know we're jumping around, but these are not lengthy, we can, we hear them, and then, we can move them all together with one motion to transmit. If you'd like to begin with number fourteen.
Good evening, this is Danny Collins, I'm with the Planning Commission Staff. Next seven amendments are part of a series of updates to the city's future land use map. Here are the locations of the seven parks sites scattered throughout the city. First, a little background of all seven amendments, this is a publicly initiated request by Tampa City Council to recognize existing City of Tampa parks. Each park is listed on the City of Tampa's Dedicated Park List, and all sites would be recognized through the recreational open space future land use designation. The Planning Commission reviewed the request and found it consistent with several of the policies in the Comprehensive Plan as it relates to promoting recreational open space opportunities throughout the city. as it relates to promoting recreational open space opportunities throughout the city. Our first park site is AIDS Memorial Park, it's in Central Tampa Planning District, and it's within the High Park Spanish Town Creek neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site. This is the future, the adopted future land use map. The site has two future land use categories. The brown to the south is Residential eighty-three, and then the triangular piece just to the north is the R.M.U. One Hundred. And this is the proposed future land use map recognizing the site as recreational open space. This is an image looking at the entrance of the park from Bay Shore Boulevard. This is looking at some of the art that's on display within the park. The request will remove the potential sixty residential units, or just over thirty thousand square feet of non-residential development. The Planning Commission's reviewed the request and found it consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Our next part is nineteen eighteen B, Ballast Point Park. It's within the South Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, the Ballast Point neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site, and it's just north of the Tampa Yacht Club. This is the adopted future land use map. The site is currently within the Residential Twenty, future land use category, and has some recreational open space within as well. This is the proposed future land use map, recognizing the entire site as recreational open space. This is looking at the entrance sign to the park from Bay Shore Boulevard. The request will remove the potential of forty dwelling units from the site, or just over forty-four thousand square feet of non-residential development. The Planning Commission reviewed the request and found it consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Our next site is Site C, Centennial Park. It's in the Central Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, the historic Ebor neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is the adopted future land use map, the site is currently Residential Fifty. And then this is the proposed future land use map, recognizing it as recreational open space. The request will remove the potential of seventy-one dwelling units from the site, or just under one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of non-residential development. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed request be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And this nineteen eighteen C was Centennial Park, it went to the BLC, and was recommended for approval to City Council. That's a little blurry. Our next amendment is Tampa nineteen, Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment nineteen eighteen D. It's Cascadian Park, it's within the Central Tampa Planning District, and within the V.M. Ebor neighborhood. This is an aerial map of the subject site and the surrounding properties. You'll see it's primarily a single-family detached that surrounds the property to the northeast and west. This is the adopted future land use map, it's currently within the urban mixed-use sixty, and it has Residential Ten and Residential Twenty surrounding it to the northeast and west. This is the proposed future land use map, recognizing the site as recreational open space. This is looking at the Cascadian Park swimming pool. This is looking south across Cascadian Park. The request will remove the potential of four hundred and ninety-six residential dwelling units, or one point one seven two million square feet of non-residential development. The Planning Commission recommends that the map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives of the comprehensive plan. Our next site is Site E, it's Twenty Second Street Park, it's within the Central Tampa Planning District, and within the old Seminole Heights neighborhood. This is an aerial map of the subject site and surrounding properties. It's just north of the Tico Plant. The site has two future land use designations, the gray is light industrial, and then the northern portion is Residential Twenty. This is the proposed future land use map, recognizing the site as recreational open space. The proposed request will remove the potential of four hundred and ninety-five dwelling units, or just over two million square feet of non-residential development. The Planning Commission found the request consistent with the goals, objectives, policies of the comprehensive plan. Our next site is Site F, it's Tappan Tack Park, it's within the South Tampa Planning District, and within the Port Tampa City neighborhood. This is an aerial map of the subject site. You'll see that there's a single-family detached residential neighborhood just to the east, and then there's some industrial to the south of the subject site. The subject site has three future land use designations, it's within the R Thirty-Five, Light Industrial, which is that gray to the south, and then there's a portion along the water, which is within the environmental sensitive area classification. This is the proposed future land use map, recognizing the site as recreational open space. The request will remove the potential of one hundred, or one thousand eighty-seven dwelling units, or just over a million square feet of non-residential development. The Planning Commission recommends that the proposed request be found consistent with the goals, objectives, policies of the comprehensive plan. Last site is Site G, it's Tacoma Trail Park. It's within the University Planning District, and within the Terrace Park neighborhood. This is an aerial map of the subject site. You'll see that there's predominantly single-family detached that surrounds the property, especially to the north and west of the site. The site is within the Residential Ten, which is the majority of the site, and then Residential Twenty, just that southern portion. There is Residential Ten and Residential Twenty that surround the site on all sides. This is the proposed future land use map, recognizing the site as recreational open space. The request will remove the potential of three hundred and eight dwelling units, or four hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet of non-residential development. The Planning Commission recommends that the proposed amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council members? No? This is good, in case you have any constituents that say, you know, this is prime real estate, what if a developer comes in and wants to put something they can't? And that's the beauty and the importance of this. So, being that these are transmittals, we can move them all at one time, Items Fourteen through Twenty? Who would like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to interrupt, but this being a public hearing, if you could just ask if there's anybody?
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on Items Fourteen through Twenty? You can speak on any of the items.
And a motion to close.
Move and close those items.
Second. Motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, who would like to go ahead and?
Move Fourteen through Twenty, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilmember Citro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, that settles that. We'll go back to Item Number Four, I believe, and that is... You, sir? No. No, Item Number Four, go ahead.
Good afternoon, David Haye, with your Planning Commission staff. The next item is located at three eleven North Newport Avenue. It's T.A.C.P.A. nineteen seventeen. It is located within the Central Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, the West Tampa Urban Village. See it there. Here's the subject site with the outlined. It's just west of the University of Tampa campus. It's adjacent to the railroad tracks there that go down to South Tampa. That portion of that neighborhood is predominantly light industrial and heavy commercial type uses currently. Little background, it is privately initiated, it's small scale, it's approximately one point seven eight acres. Currently, the future land use category is general mixed-use twenty-four, and the applicant is seeking a change to go to the urban mixed-use sixty, future land use category. Here, we'll just quickly take a quick tour. We're looking north, up north Newport Avenue, the subject site's on the right there. Now, we're looking northeast toward the intersection of North Gilcrest Avenue and West Fig Street, the subject site's on the right. Here, we're looking northeast from the intersection of West Fig and North Newport Avenue, the subject site's on the right. And here, we're looking south down North Newport Avenue, the subject site's on the left. Here, we have the adopted future land use map. It's hard to tell, but the subject site and properties to the west and to the north, in that light blue, are the general mixed-use twenty-four. Now, that's another category that allows industrial, residential, and commercial uses. To the northeast of the site is already some urban mixed-use sixty. That was a planned amendment about a year or two ago. The blue is the public, semi-public, representing the University of Tampa. And then there's some U.M.U. down at Kennedy and Willow, where the Tampa General Hospital campus is going to be located. Next. Here, if the amendment is approved, the subject site would go to that urban mixed-use sixty, future land use category. Currently, under that general mixed-use twenty-four, forty-two dwelling units, or a maximum of one hundred and sixteen thousand square feet, can be considered. If this is approved, and the site does go to that urban mixed-use sixty, future land use category, the maximums would go up to one hundred and six residential units, or two hundred and fifty-one thousand square feet of residential or non-residential. Under that U.M.U., an applicant can use either the Florya ratio or the unit count, whichever is more beneficial to them. Next. During the review, there were comments from the school board. Gorey Elementary, Wilson Middle, and Plant High School currently do not have adequate capacity. They do not do a capacity concurrent, a concurrency evaluation at this point. At any zoning, that's when they would look in the detail, this is for information only. Next. The Planning Commission did find that the request is consistent with a number of policies promoting infill development. There's also policies that support mixed-use development and investment in that Central Tampa Planning District. Next. There's also specific policies dealing with this portion of West Tampa, and support residential development within it. And then this urban mixed-use sixty, the typical development pattern under that urban mixed-use sixty, is more supportive of a transit, it's more transit supportive, due to the density and intensity. So, based on all that, your Planning Commission is recommending that this be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies.
Thank you very much. Any questions from board members, Councilmember Dingfelder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David?
Yes.
Wholeheartedly in support of, of the modification to the U.M.U. sixty, but when I looked at this, I scratched my head, and I said, you know, that's two blocks off of Kennedy. It's next to a railroad track, it's surrounded by a lot of industrial and commercial that's clearly in transition. I said, you know, this is an ideal location, in my mind, for a U.M.U., I mean, an R.M.U. One Hundred. Now, I don't know who the petitioner is that put this forward, but, but to me, and we've had this conversation before in regard to the Kennedy Corridor, and trying to intensify density within the Kennedy Corridor for purposes of transit, and to take a little load off of other residential areas. But I'm just wondering if that came up for discussion, or is the applicant here, or what?
The applicant is here. I know, I can tell you that we've had conversations about a year or two ago that dealt with the one just to the north. And if my memory serves me correctly, they had originally come in for a regional mixed-use One Hundred. There is some, there are some issues potentially. The R.M.U. One Hundred is more in areas where there's major transportation infrastructure to support the, those type, that intensity and density. The issue with this area is that part of the grid is cut off due to the railroad tracks. Now, again, under a future scenario, but nothing's been approved, those tracks could be considered for some sort of transit. But see, there's no, nothing adopted that recognizes that as a potential transit corridor. So, without that, I think staff felt more appropriate with the U.M.U. sixty, that it does support some additional intensity and density, but it does limit it to, because of the grid network, the cutoff to the west there. So, that was our just staff discussion.
Right, but I mean, even, I recognize you can't really walk down the tracks and get to Kennedy, but if you walk a block up, you're on Willow, and two blocks down, you're at the corner of Willow and Kennedy. And then, don't we consider Kennedy a potential or significant transit corridor?
It is recognized as a transit emphasis corridor, yes, you are correct.
I mean, I just see that we don't have that many opportunities to really increase density without a huge amount of neighborhood opposition. I don't see much here tonight. In a good location that has prime opportunity, in this case, it would double the potential density of what's being, no, it would, it would almost double the potential density of what's being proposed.
Well, I would always suggest that the Planning Commission will look at any studies that the city council would like us to coordinate with, with our partners at the city, and things like that. So, if there is some direction given, that could be a potential to look at, but I don't think it would be appropriate currently under this request.
And where is the petitioner, Mr.?
Chairman, council, Michael Porter, fourteen five oh two, from Delvey Highway, recommending the applicant. Mr. Dingfelder, we accept your recommendation for R.M.U. One Hundred, but it's not necessary for our interest, the site is somewhat limited, it's only one point seven eight acres. We are going on the, essentially, the track record of the prior U.M.U. sixty plan amendment. We've reviewed those P.D. plans for market rate housing. As you know, we can use the F.A.R., the U.M.U. sixty, you have three point two five. General mixed-use certainly does not allow that F.A.R. transfer, so you can only build so high, and build so much parking garage. Logistically, to go above that becomes problematic. My client is happy with the U.M.U. sixty, they're looking at a mid-rise project. But if you want to do an R.M.U. One Hundred, we'll be happy to accept that amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to look at the big picture of where we're headed, and I've been speaking about this opportunity in the Kennedy Corridor to go high-rise, you know? And I realize there's some real nice mid-rise in that area, but where's the rule that says we can't go, we can't go, you know, high-rise there? Why does all the high-rise have to be downtown? I don't think it would hurt that area at all. And we'd get more people, and we'd have more people able to use transit, I'm not fussing, you know that. I'm just saying, I think we should start exploring that. If tonight's not the right time or opportunity, that's fine, and I wish your client well, and I'll vote in support of this. But I'm just saying, as a general rule, let's try and increase density in good places like this, again, where there's not opposition, and where, you know, where it's close to a corridor.
So. Thank you for that comment. This is urban infill, there's no question it could accommodate higher intensity. This is light industrial, it's currently Lucky Dog, it's been that way forever, underutilized, light industrial to the west. My client is fine with the U.M.U. sixty, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Steph.
Thank you very much. The president, yes, ma'am?
If I may, Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney, just for purposes of tonight's hearing, it's not possible to increase the density beyond what was noticed for tonight's hearing. So, while I- So while I appreciate the sentiment, you're limited to the request that is before you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was hoping the applicant would get so excited, he'd just continue it and re-notice, but thank you.
We're on the timeline, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, anything else, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number four? Saying none? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Motion to close from Councilmember Goode, second from Councilmember Miranda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know where we left off, was it, well, we'll start with Councilmember Miranda, if you wouldn't mind taking item number four.
Thank you, Chairman, move follow, P A nineteen dash seventeen. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration and ordinance amending the image twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at three eleven North Newport Avenue, and from general mixed-use twenty-four C M U dash two four to urban mixed-use sixty. U M U sixty providing for repeal of all ordinances conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Take it, second.
We have a second from Councilmember Goode's, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carry unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on June twenty-fifth at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. Next up, we go to item number twelve.
Councilman David Haye with your planning commission staff. Item twelve, the applicant has requested a continuance. They felt uncomfortable coming down here with the current situation. They're requesting a continuance to the July thirtieth.
We have a motion to continue this item, item number twelve, to July thirtieth.
A date, time please, excuse me, time please.
What, what time do we have? July thirtieth would be five oh one P M.
Is that a regular five P M night, David?
Yes, five oh one.
It says six P M here.
It says six?
Yes.
Typically, land use meetings begin at-
That's right, we'll do it at five oh one then, so we have to update that calendar. Okey dokey. We have a motion and we had a second?
Take it.
Second from Councilmember Goode's for that rescheduling, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you very much. Last item of the afternoon, because we're still in afternoon, you know, it's felt like we've been here a week. Item number thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I'm sorry to interrupt, just you mentioned the word rescheduling. I believe this would be a continuance, is it a continuance?
We can't hear you, Mr. Shelby.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to be clear, just so the record is clear, it's a continuance to that date.
I, okay, put it as a continuance, I didn't use the word continuance.
Okay, thank you.
Any objections to that?
No objection.
All right, item number thirteen.
Okay, this should be the last item, I think? Last item, this is text amendment nineteen dash twenty-one. It's an amendment to the Neighborhood Policy five point one point nine. A little background, this was initiated by the Tampa Legal Department in partnership with the planning commission. It is proposing the deletion of Neighborhood Policy five point one point nine. The policy is deemed legally problematic by the Tampa Legal Department based on case law regarding protected classes. Your planning commission reviewed and did find the proposed text amendment to delete Neighborhood Policy five point one point nine would be consistent with the adopted policy guidance within the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan seeks to protect residential neighborhoods from incompatible uses. Permitted zoning districts and what future land use categories they are permitted in are outlined in section twenty-seven dash twenty-one of the Land Development Code. Any zoning district which is not consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, according to the consistency matrix, shall not be permitted apply for nor approved. The popularity of a proposed use by the surrounding residents or stakeholders is not a factor in how the city regulates uses. The deletion of Neighborhood Policy five point one point nine would not eliminate or reduce any existing protections for residential neighborhoods. The Comprehensive Plan is also clear that discrimination of any kind based on the overall use or the people that will occupy the use is not tolerated in the city of Tampa. The deletion of Neighborhood Policy five point one point nine would remove any ambiguity regarding the regulation of uses based on the popularity of a particular use and would further several neighborhood and housing-related comp plan policies. So based on that, the recommendation from the planning commission is that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you. I hear what you're saying, I know that especially group homes, you have to be very cautious and we end up in litigation about group homes, and that's one of the ones that are listed. But Ms. Wells, I guess I was wondering when I read this, it seems like we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater, because if you look, if everybody looks at page twenty-two, you'll see the language that's being recommended to strike. The original language says, "The city shall continue to support standards and land use, land development regulations that address the location and excessive concentration of locally unpopular land uses such as group homes, landfills, jails, parole offices, work release facilities, power lines, and public housing." I would think that we would still want to continue to support standards in land development regulations that address the location of landfills, jails, work release facilities, power lines, and power lines. Maybe being a little more cautious on public housing and group homes, maybe even the work release facilities. But in regard to, you know, the actual jails, landfills, power lines, those are kind of, the kind of things that a lot of people really legitimately don't want next to their residential. So are we, is there still protection in the comp plan to assure that, you know, that, that those other three items of power lines and landfills and jails don't end up immediately adjacent to residential?
Again, David Haye, planning commission staff, when we look at uses, all, and all uses are classified by the city of Tampa. So we, there is a consistency matrix that is held within the Land Development Code that talks about what zoning districts are permitted under what land use category. There are no changes to that matrix or any of those uses that are outlined in that consistency matrix.
In the zoning code?
In the zoning code and-
But how about in the comp plan?
Right, but there's also policy language that deals with the protection of neighborhoods, the character of neighborhoods, things like that. So staff and the planning commission did find that there's numerous other policies that deal with the regulation of uses and the appropriate location of those uses in the city of Tampa. And the planning commission didn't, also agreed that this language, a majority of them, agreed that this language is problematic when you're grouping those uses in with public housing and landfills, that that's probably not the best worded policy.
No, I totally agree. We shouldn't have language in there that says locally unpopular, blah, 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 because it's not a popularity contest. But, and Ms. Wells, I will need you to confirm what David said is, as long as we're still protected in the comp plan, that, you know, from some of those very serious uses like landfills, jails, and power lines.
Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney, David Haye mentioned the other policies, goals, objectives, and policies in the Comprehensive Plan that protect neighborhoods. And I would submit to council that the removal of this language from the Comprehensive Plan doesn't take away from the existing regulations that are in place today under chapter twenty-seven and other provisions of the city's Code of Ordinances.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? May I have a motion to close?
Move to close.
All right, all in favor? I'm sorry, a motion from Councilmember Goode, second from Councilmember Citro, I believe, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Who would like to transmit this item? Anybody?
Move to transmit.
Right, a motion from Councilmember Dingfelder, do we have a second? Second from Councilman Citro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that concludes the agenda, unless there's anything else. We'll go to information reports and new business by council members, Councilmember Viera.
Yes, I have seven items that are very important to me, I'm joking.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I know we want to get out.
Nothing, sir, okay, good. Councilmember Goode's?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Dingfelder?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Carlson?
I forgot to, I forgot to make one earlier, and I also wanted to ask you all. Ed Noreen suggested that we make a motion or write a resolution to the state attorney to ask that the charges be dropped in relation to the protest march on Broereen. How do you all feel about that?
I was actually thinking about making a phone call and just-
I'll let you handle it.
-the state attorney, so don't, if you want to do that, that would be a-
As long as somebody, as long as somebody's going to handle it.
No, you, if you want to make the motion, I'm happy to support it.
I think a united, united letter or resolution-
I would like to make a motion that, that city council send a letter to state, to the state attorney to ask that charges be dropped in relation to the protest mark, peaceful protest march on Broereen Street last week.
We have a motion, Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Goode's, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just want to, I want to address, and I appreciate the motion, and I agree with the motion, but I think we have to be very, a little bit more specific in what type of charges. If there were just simple charges that somebody was put in jail for whatever reason that was, had nothing to do with any larceny and breaking of windows and, 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 and I don't know what the vast majority of the charges are. I don't know, I think the chief today didn't have a direct answer to all that, did he?
I didn't, I didn't hear the charge, does anybody know if there, is there one of unlawful protest?
If it's just unlawful assembly, I got no problem with that at all.
Correct, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if it's just unlawful assembly, I've got no problem with that at all.
Mr. Chair, that was my point for asking Chief Dugan, how many were arrested? He said a hundred and thirty-eight, and I said, which ones were charged with felonies? Again, I concur with, with Councilmember Miranda, if they are simple, not having permits to protest, I understand that. Yes, I can go along with that.
Councilman Viera?
Yeah, and that's a point well made by Councilmember Miranda, and thank you for that, sir, which is that my understanding is that there were, and again, note the qualification, there were individuals who were arrested because when there was a call to disperse the crowd, folks didn't, but many of those were arrested for being there, but there's a distinction between that and somebody who is doing property damage, et cetera. So, yeah, that's a-
Is there a way that we can make it more specific now?
Yeah, I would suggest that we say minor misdemeanors?
Yeah.
And let him take it for what it's worth, you know? I think minor, minor misdemeanors. Now, if you're a vandal and you smash a window, that still could be a misdemeanor. It might be, you know, a first degree misdemeanor or whatever, but I think if we just say minor misdemeanors, I think we're getting the point across.
All right, is that all right, Councilman Carlson?
Are you, are you guys okay with that?
All right, do we have a, so to clarify, for a letter in support of-
I would like to make a motion that city council send a letter to state attorney, to the state attorney to ask that minor misdemeanor charges be dropped in relation to the peaceful protest march on Broereen Street last week.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Councilmember Viera, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything else, sir?
Second, yes, just back to communication and Councilman Goode's also mentioned this this morning. I would like to make a motion to ask city staff to develop a communication process by which city council members will get more immediate information regarding urgent developments in the city. This should include how to develop much-needed information that we can disseminate to neighborhood and community leaders. The genesis of this is that the neighborhood leaders last night were asking me, what are we supposed to tell our members? There are people marching down the streets, what do we tell them, there's nothing to tell them. And we need a communication process to be able to help us to answer questions to the, we're the front line of communication with, with neighbors and constituents, and we need the tools, we need to know ourselves. You all were talking about the National Guard, we need tools ourselves, and we need information ourselves, but we need things that we can send out to them as well.
And how would you like that, inform a staff report?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think in my motion, I asked them to come back, her to come back with those recommendations. When she comes back, I think we can add those in, when she comes back, depending what she brings us, as to how we're going to lay this communication out. That's the, the big problem, we've been asking and asking, so that's why I refer to the, the city attorney now and put it in her hands to now come back and tell us what those standards should be.
Do you all think, do you all agree, do you think his motion-
No, I think, I think Councilman Goode's puts it all together, he's right.
So it's fine, you think yours is fine?
Because I, I made sure I mentioned everyone has a public information, obviously we still need information, but I needed the city attorney to put that into where, how do that fits and relates to us? Is that has to be put into us doing the charter amendment? Is that put into executive order, is that put in to whatever, so that way we know where we stand on that? So I think, I think it kind of includes everything you're talking about. So when she brings that back to us, if there's a doubt, then we can add that in and ask to go back and so forth and so on. But now it's in the city attorney's hands, and now bring us back something so we can have something concrete.
So you want me to just drop this one?
I mean, if you, I mean, if you can wait, I mean, I think, I think we, the motion I made this morning was pretty clear that there's a communication problem, Mr. Shelby, was it not, or the? I thought it was pretty clear, what we're asking, we know there's a communication problem as it relates to us giving information to the community.
I would draw that out, and if it, if they don't answer the questions, then we'll come back later.
There you go.
Good, anything else, sir? Councilman Citro?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Miranda?
No, sir, the only thing I want to say, thank you to everyone who came today to speak to us, they were very cordial, and they had their say in how they felt, and I want to thank Unagarve, who's done a marvelous job here at the Convention Center, and everyone who attended, thank you very much, you've done a beautiful job.
Thank you, can I get a motion to receive and file?
Move to receive and file.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.